All right, let's call to order the May 10th, 2023 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. If you'll bow with me, I'll handle the prayer and I'll handle the pledge. Father, thank you for this day. Lord, I pray that you give us guidance. Lord, that you give us the ability to make not just decisions that are good for the city of Murfreesboro, Father, but decisions that are right. Lord, help us be able to listen. Help us be able to comprehend what we have in front of us. Lord, I pray for all those graduates who are graduating this week. That you give them guidance, Lord, that you give them, most of all, a feeling of accomplishment for being able to accomplish something that will set them up in their life. Lord, be with us and bless us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did your boys graduate?
They graduated Saturday.
Nice. Have you started crying?
We already had chapel this morning, so I've cried a couple times already this morning.
You know Drew won't always come over.
Yeah. All right, let's start with item one, fiscal year 23 budget amendment ordinance.
Thank you. Yes, now that the Community Investment Trust Fund has been established, council needs to approve a budget amendment for both general fund and for the trust. So this first item is an ordinance to allow for the $41 million transfer from general fund to the trust. Happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Deacon.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Resolution 23 R17. This is the Community Investment Trust budget.
Right, so this is the resolution to accept and approve the budget as approved by the trust board.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
We'll move to item three, construction contract for 2140 Thompson Lane renovations. Ms. Traddelson.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. We have before you today a construction contract for 2140 North Thompson Lane. Last year, council approved purchasing the building, which is partly built out and partly open. We solicited bids and received a qualified bid from Baron Construction, $7, $8 million. We've also attached to the agenda item today a proposed budget to get that building ready. And we ask that you establish a project budget of $2.6 million, which we would fund from the Community Investment Plan, CIP number 21, FY21, and establish that budget today. Our timeframe on this would be to finish the renovations later this fall in the November timeframe, prepare the building for occupancy with the follow-up stuff, and then have those ready to move in, perhaps around the first of the year. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Recommend that you approve the contract today and the budget as we proposed.
What is the equipment line item?
So the equipment includes mostly IT-related stuff. The building, the upstairs portion of the second floor is really open. It's just got some flooring in it and a little bit of framing that was required for the structure. So it'll be a full build-out, including all of the equipment that we would need to activate that space.
Site exterior renovations, is that just upgraded landscaping or lighting or?
We have some improvements we need to make to the site and renovate the striping. The site's been there for about 15 years now, and so it would just be some exterior work, landscaping primarily and site work primarily, and we need to make a couple of adjustments to some handicap accessible ramps and routes.
We still are going to be well under budget, what our initial construction cost for our new building.
Yes, this is well under $400 per square foot with full build-out. And the numbers we've been looking at for occupancy, full build-out, ready to move in, occupancies are in the $450 per square foot range now, including land and construction.
The furnishings, that's for new furnishings, and then the existing furnishings and those other buildings, we'll just get rid of them or auction them off?
Yeah, so we've got a couple scenarios happening there. The fire department has been in its current location for many years using hand-me-down and patch-together furniture. A lot of that would not survive the move. And then the Parks and Rec Department, some of the folks they're moving, they will backfill with other staff, and so the furniture that they're using now will stay in place, be backfilled with other staff.
So the Parks Building will be, Parks's administrative staff right now is in two buildings. One building's not salvageable and needs to come down. That's the, what we call the Jamison.
Jamison.
Jamison Building. So that staff will move into the existing building until, and it'll be less public access to it, so it'll be easier to get in and out of the new building than it is to the existing building. And it'll be a lot less staff in that old house, is what it is. And so we utilize that until we can build out a suitable office for them. But the house itself is a residential structure and not made for commercial use, and it's not really, it's past its useful life as well. That's the plan. So they'll utilize the furniture in there, because the one in Jamison is much like the furniture in Franklin, and it's just, it's been there so long and it's not in good repair condition.
So moved.
Say.
Question second. Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to the development agreement with Rutherford County and the Rutherford County Board of Education. Mr. Corr.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this item with you. I have a high-level few slides to go over this, but if you have reviewed the agreement or are comfortable considering it and voting on it, and just maybe have questions or discussion without me going into any kind of presentation. I see some favorable looks that, so.
I mean, it's your time. We have nowhere to go. I'm sorry.
You're the only reason I showed up.
I got a nasty look from Councilman Everwater.
When I said I wouldn't present.
Mix signals.
I'm not good at those mixed signals. If you don't believe me, ask my wife. Can you, I think it'd be good to maybe hit the point, not the whole thing, but the discussion, from what I understand, has been mainly on road improvements. So maybe if you could go to the portion of reading through the entire agreement, like most of it's pretty standard, like for an outside sewer, but can you get into the road discussion?
Sure, sure. First slide, just to kind of orient you where we are, the property in yellow, Blackman Road, Baker Road and the intersection, and you can see where the city limits is located and then where the sewer's located in relation to the property. So we change the ordinance so that they could ask for outside sewer without requesting annexation. And so as part of the ordinance requirements, there is also a development agreement that must be approved, and that's what you have before you today. And again, I'll go, I won't go through these, but project engineering and sewer fees are pretty standard. Are requiring a traffic impact study, though, bullet number two here, along Blackman Road and Baker Road. So we're asking them to do a traffic impact study, understanding that there's not a comprehensive road improvement plan for Blackman or Baker Road at this point. Wanting the traffic impact study, construction inspection, standard stuff, and this is really the road and traffic improvement. So we are asking that the, and legal folks worked much harder on this than me, so if they have some additions, if I don't cover all this, I just, high-level stuff, but if there's more intimate or intricate details, please interrupt me. We're looking at asking them to donate a 50-foot wide right-of-way along the edge of the property adjacent to Blackman for the proposed future widening of that road. And also to construct left and/or right turn lanes on Blackman and Baker Road where they propose school entrances. We do allow that those road improvements may be phased, since there are going to be two schools. And then we also, we are requiring that they construct a left and turn, left and right turn lane at Baker Road's intersection with Blackman Road. I think that's pretty much the crux of the traffic and road improvements that we're asking. So the traffic impact study, basically right and left-hand turn lanes and entrances and at the intersection of Blackman and Baker Road.
If I could just clarify one point, they've, the school board has already conducted and received the results of a traffic impact study, and that was provided to city staff in the context, in the process of negotiating this agreement. So when you, it's possible, of course, that they do a second traffic study, and they're not precluded from doing that, but if you, in the contract, they say that they're required to do, before the opening of a second school on the property, they have to construct all the short-term road improvements recommended in the traffic impact study. And they're kind of broken out in the traffic impact study of short-term, long-term. And if anyone wants a copy of that, I'd be happy to provide it to them.
I would like a copy of it.
So we are, staff has recommended approval of the development agreement. There's a very minor change. I think there's an approval line for Water Resources Board on the last page that it won't be going back to the Water Resources Board for approval. So that'll get.
The only comment I want to make, just to the entire council, I've been, I was supportive and brought up, I felt like it was the right thing to do to provide sewer to the school board, because there's also city students who possibly could be going to this. I also think, on the other side, that it also is fair, if the school board or the county has a traffic study completed for a piece of property, and that traffic study delineates and says there's, this work needs to be done, I think any other developer that would be coming into the city, we would require that work to be done to develop that piece of property. So I think it's very fair if their third-party traffic engineer says this work should be done, that it's fair for the city to say, okay, this is something that needs to be taken into consideration, not only for safety but for the overall area. Because ultimately, if that work's not done, then that's going to fall back either to the county or to the city to complete that work. And so I think that this is a fair way to do that.
I agree. I'll also add that Jeffrey, that the attorney for the school board has communicated to me that they, they don't know the exact timing of the school construction, but their expectation is that it will be phased in. And right now, the general thought is, although it may change, is that the elementary school would be constructed first and a middle school would be constructed second. But in terms of when that first school is constructed, there's not a date certain, and when the, certainly when the second school would be constructed, there's not a date certain, other than it will be phased.
I think we're going to be dealing with this more as school, we talk about school construction, because there's just no good land left, that large tracts of good land left, they're not out there. And if they are out there, they're either super expensive or super hard to develop. Any questions?
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
No.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item five, 10-year plan update and proposed fee structure.
Mayor, thank you again. I've kind of wrapped two things into one presentation here. One is the 10-year solid waste plan update, as you've seen the previous two years, and I've also kind of wrapped in the fee, a proposed fee structure, multi-year increase to kind of get us to where we cover our expenses and maybe make the solid waste department or the solid waste authority, if we go there, an enterprise fund, an independent, from a standpoint of it generates its own revenue from the user fee. So again, not to go too fast, but some of the regional landfill available life expectancy, I think this is good to know. In 2022, there was just issued, these are TDEC annual progress reports, the green bars there show that Middle Point has a remaining six years of life per their 2022 report that they just issued. Cedar Ridge, which is in Lewisburg, this is a waste management facility, those teal bars show that they have about an 11-year life expectancy. The unique, the interesting thing is when I'm, I'm part of the Nashville Regional Council Solid Waste Strike Force, and we met in April, and we had a middle, Mike Klassen's part of that strike force as well, he actually said he sees Middle Point closing in four years. So instead of six, you've got a representative that says four. We also have a representative from Waste Management there, so they just reported over 11, and he says eight years. So I don't know what to say, other than there's not very strong reliability on these annual progress reports that TDEC is putting out, if you have representatives within a couple of months are contradicting what those reports demonstrate. So I thought that was important. This is kind of the GNRC solid waste strike, this is kind of the action plan or timeline of activity. You can kind of see on that phase one table setting, we're right there at the end of that phase. There were three at this last meeting. We created three committees, one on policy and legislation, education and outreach, and industry solutions. I was placed on the industry solutions committee. So we are looking at rapid response and long-term solutions or recommendations. A lot of it is geared towards getting something in front of the legislature somewhere in the October timeframe for the next legislative session, if there needs to be any action taken. So just from my committee, I can kind of report that a regional solution requiring rapid response, I think we came to a conclusion pretty quickly, we do not see a new Division One landfill being permitted based on the hurdles and the requirements of TDEC, plus the local opposition that would occur. We don't see that happening within a, say, a six-to-seven-year timeframe to provide a regional solution for, you know, 30-some-odd counties in middle Tennessee. So the rapid response solution that we expect to see is if we have, for a regional solution, we would have to rail this solid waste out of state, and there are some state revenue implications on that. So again, we've just hit this at one time at one meeting, kind of giving you a high-level review, I mean, well, we only hit a high level. So then we looked at the community-level potentials, and we saw that as a longer, as the longer view solution, and it's similar, I've kind of expressed what you all had done with the triple bottom-line assessments to define your community's priorities. You all did that, one of our priorities being, we don't want to be the waste for Metro Nashville and surrounding counties. Other communities may have different priorities. Financial viability may be much, much higher in certain communities than environmental sustainability. We prioritized each one of those, the social implications, the environmental sustainability, and the financial viability, pretty much as equals here in Murfreesboro. Again, diversion rates, recycling goals, and maybe TDEC being more flexible and allowing some out-of-the-box pilots. I know Metro is looking at some food waste collection. California is saying no more food waste in any landfills in that state at a predetermined date coming up. Murfreesboro trends, so this, just some graphs that show that we're increasing our municipal solid waste tonnage, about 865 tons per year. We have an increase of about 120 carts per month. This is the breakout. We do have, just over 22,000 of those solid waste carts are billed by CUD. And kind of an important note there, that little approximately 400 commercial carts are in the city core overlay. That's somewhat relevant here when I get into the pro forma. So existing expenses and added expense, I tried to create a graph here that said, what if, what if Middle Point didn't close and we just had to collect, and transport it to a free-tipping fee disposal around the corner? You can see down at the bottom, those are in $1 million. 9.3 or 10.5 expected in FY23, right there, something like that? Or? So that, to do that, in order to cover that expense, we really need to be at $16 per month, per residential customer, if we, if Middle Point continued to exist and we didn't have to do any other option. You can see the added expense there in the orange, based on our current waste away. And that adds about $7.50 per month, the new debt and disposal costs. So really, you're looking at $23.50 roughly to cover 100% of the future expenses. In order to do that, I don't want to get too busy, this is the expense, but this is kind of a little bit of a busy slide. You can see the blue, the blue dots and the blue line, it shows a proposed increase on the residential rate. We're at 750 right now. Need to go with my, your options. We're down here at $7.50 per month. We're proposing $9.50 for next year. That still only keeps us at a, this is recovery percentage, so we're still only recovering about 64%. So you can see, over an eight-year period, we get up to 2350, and that gives us that 103% recovery. So you can kind of see the recovery percentages as we, as we move over time. This is a tabular form, the items in red kind of show the fiscal year and the proposed increase. So I believe that's three, four, five, six, yeah, eight, or maybe nine years, is that nine years? Eight years on residential. We do show a five-year commercial rate increase as well. At $55 per month, and we do state over here that the city core overlay businesses would stay flat at the 30, the 400 carts. I mentioned earlier that those 400 carts, since they don't really have any other options, they don't have the space or the area to go get a dumpster, that we would flatten that at the $30 per month and not increase that. So we also talk in the 10-year plan, a solid waste authority, this is where we have authority that could incur debt, sell material, commodities, enter into contractual relationships independent of the city, charge fees, use the property and facilities and equipment of employees of municipality, i.e., the city of Murfreesboro could provide administrative and operational assistance. So the next steps, we're probably discussing governance structure, the board makeup and responsibility of an authority, define the role of existing departments for assistance, again, in those operations and internal services and billing, and then potentially firm up an inter-local agreement with the county, even that a solid waste, a city solid waste authority is a likely path forward. So our recommendation at the end of the day is to increase solid waste residential fee by $2 per month, from 750 to 950, and increase the commercial fee by $5, from 30 to 35, but excluding the city core overlay businesses. So that would represent an approximate $1.44 million revenue increase to the general fund, which just means you don't have, the tax base does not have to fund that portion of the budget. So that was it, a lot of information, hopefully good information, and if you all want to talk or, this, we're not asking for any action today. This is for information only, marinade, think about it. There's probably to be two future actions that we would require, or would request, a year approving the 10-year plan update, and then I would think there would be another resolution for the solid waste fee to be increased. Is that right?
Well, it's in the budget right now that we're planning to present to council in a couple of weeks, so that $2 increase is already in the general fund budget.
I think we set the ordinance up, though, that the fee would just have to have a, the fee structure could be adopted through resolution.
I will defer to Adam and Jennifer on that, but yes, we do have the $2 and $5 fee increases. I want to correct, I did show the commercial increase as well.
We set it up to where we wouldn't require an ordinance change, it would just require a resolution to adopt the fee.
That's correct, yep.
Yeah.
Darren, can you go back to the slide where it starts at 750 and it creeps up year by year, right there?
You want to do the table or you want to do the graph?
Right there, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
So for fiscal year '31, full recovery projected.
Right.
And then it's flat after that. Is there ever a situation where it potentially go from 2350 back down to 2150?
Well, there's.
2250.
It does, so the, a lot of this does revolve around the, I've been pretty conservative in regards to not anticipating a lot of revenue coming back to the city with regards to the renewable natural gas. If that renewable natural gas, if there's a windfall or a significant revenue generation of renewable natural gas, and if the government continues to subsidize it, yes, those things could come back and we could see a decrease. Conversely, though, if subsidies end and renewable natural gas does not get that kind of cheddar kickback, whatever you want to call it, it could go up. So these are, this is yet, when you're trying to, Doug and I like to call it the cone of uncertainty, you know, as you, as you go farther out into the distance, the uncertainty of your pro forma assumptions get.
And it could just stay right there.
This is still a much, this is still 2350, I think the big message here is this is a really, compared to what people are currently paying, say, Republic or private haulers or people that are out in the county on a monthly basis, this is still, this is a very, very attractive monthly fee, given the alternatives that you have from a private, private hauler and disposal costs.
Darren, what do you think, puts the trigger for the solid waste authority?
You know, that's, I know that the Senate and the House passed it, and apparently once was sent to the governor's desk to sign, I don't know if he signed it yet, that's the next, yeah, there's going to need to be some discussion on that. We haven't really, I kind of brought it up here to broach the topic, but I have not gotten into the weeds on that at all. So that's something that we'll have to get into.
I will check to see what the status is with respect to the governor. The process is, once the governor signs it, it is the private act, sign that the governor has sent back to the city with instructions that the city council has to pass another resolution to formally adopt the charter. But I will check on the status of where that is in the governor's desk and the process and get back to council on that.
And the charter amendment gives council the ability to create the authority. It doesn't, it's not self-created that way. Yeah, it doesn't mandate it to be done, so it just gives the city authority to set it up if they need to, and we're still working to see what the best use of it might be. It does, it does open a lot of options that are attractive.
Darren, on the fee schedule, I'm noticing that the residential rate has like a 200% increase and commercial's only like an 80% increase. Just seems like they're taxing a lot of this to the residential people. I mean, commercial takes up a lot of space in our waste, right?
Right. So I think the break, and if I can go back to that table, I So, so I think the breakdown, if I can go back to that table, I think there's about 3,000, let me see if I can make that, yeah. So if you look, there's about 3,000 carts, commercial. We could, I mean, when, when we first implemented the $30 fee, I will tell you, there was more than 3,000 carts, we, commercial carts, when we implemented that $30 per month fee, we were probably closer to 5,000. So we had about 2,000 that, that opted out. So, we can go up, and we can kind of test the threshold of, but if, I tried to keep it to where, because most of these commercial folks have three or four carts, so you're talking about that $55 times four, three or four, so you're probably talking about $150 to $200, since it does become more attractive to them around that range for them to go get small, little three, five cubic yard dumpsters. So we're trying to kind of test the market condition, if we want to go higher, we can, we just may, we may lose some of those commercial customers.
Yeah, it was intentional to get away from the commercial customer, because of the type of ways to how you have to collect it and everything else, the rate was initially set to above market, more or less, to force those that could to go out to commercial haulers.
Right.
And so, the number, we, I, I, we haven't looked at the market recently, but the number, we're trying to stay above market so that they go get commercial service, and the number continues to go down. Really staying in the residential collection business is where we want to be.
Right, and I, I guess testing the market makes sense if we want to sell our product, but in this case, we don't want, necessarily need them to use the truck service, so should we go higher than 55?
Well, we may need to do a little balance here, if we lose those, if we lose those 3,000 carts, or those 3,100 carts at 30 bucks, it's going to have to fall back onto the residential as well. So there's a certain, there's a certain threshold of where if we start, if we drive all those commercials off that are kind of helping subsidize the, the residential...
There's a little tipping point in there.
There's a little tipping point there that I'm trying to kind of, I, I don't know exactly where it is, but there is a tipping point, that if we start losing that, then the, the cost will have to be borne fully by the residential at some point.
And, and the other, the other thing is that there are some commercial clients who just can't do a dumpster. And, and, you know, we approved plans and allowed development that didn't require that, that's changed, we do now. And so there is a little bit of, you know, we don't want to penalize someone for, too harshly for, for doing that. That said, they do have a different sort of waste stream that we do, you know, it, it does require a premium, and so, there's some factors that are going there, trying to set that price over there, to set it right to hit both those marks.
We can, I mean, if you want us to try to see what the, if, if we want to try to go, you know, 60, 65, 70, those three years that we don't have, that are not, that are, we should kind of stop, stop the commercial and continue with the residential, if you want us to keep going up five, we can see what that does, and we can kind of do a sensitivity analysis and see how much if we, if we charge the, the, the commercial of 70 bucks, and then if that drops the, the residential rate by maybe a couple of dollars, we can see what that does. Play, play, we'll do a couple of scenarios for you.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that, it's just a really big difference in the percent change.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. I've got a spreadsheet.
Don't send it to us.
I'll put it right here for you, if you want me to take it. Okay.
Craig just said this, but the part to be careful, on the commercial, you know, your downtown business owners being one of those, we don't have the option to have, we can't say, hey, we don't want you to pick our trash up anymore, there's another option, because there is no other option downtown.
Right. And, and that's one of the reasons we kept the city, we said, we, we actually, the 400 carts that are in the city core overlay, we said 30, because we, we know they don't have any other options.
And that includes downtown, right?
Yes, that includes downtown.
CBD, the, I hate to say CBD, it's like saying T, yeah, so the commercial downtown is limited.
How many commercial carts or cans are we talking about?
33,067, right, right there, and 400 of those are...
Not 33,000, 3,067.
Yeah, what did I just say?
33,000.
Oh, I didn't mean that, sorry, yeah, 3,067 on the commercial total. So only 244 of those are in CUD's areas, and then 2800, so yeah, and 400 of the, of the 3,000 are, are inside the city core overlay, per Russell, who I got that information, Russell, you better, yeah, make sure you're right there, Russell.
And, and new development downtown will require dumpsters, and, you know, so there's not, we don't keep replicating what, in the past, but in a tight urban area, you know, there's, we do have to make accommodation for that.
But the tighter areas that are in downtown will stay at the $30?
Yes. They'll have room for a dumpster.
So it doesn't really have anything to do with increasing the commercial fee?
But the good thing, Jamie, is like the commercial fee, there is a, and this goes back for some time, like, there are some apartment complexes that are on that commercial that we really need to, in my opinion, that fee needs to be raised up enough to where they need to have commercial haulers, they just, we're not up high enough now where it's cheap, it's cheaper to use the city right now than it is to hire a commercial hauler.
Yes, I want it higher, is that not clear? I've said that, right?
Yeah.
There was a, there was a, there was several downtown apartments that, that, yeah, that got out of the city business, because when you started adding 30 bucks times, they had 20 plus cars, you know, it was, they needed, they needed to go get a dumpster.
Yeah, there's no incentive not to get another cart when we weren't charging for carts.
Right.
Yeah, you're, you're dead on. I think it does need to go.
Okay, I'm like, I feel like, I feel like y'all are disagreeing, but we're saying the same thing, so, okay, okay.
In a perfect world, the, the 3,067 units subtract the 400 that are in the CBD, I mean, in a perfect world, we wouldn't want to pick up any of those 2,800 that were left. I mean, they, they really need to be on private haulers, we don't pick up commercial trash anywhere else, that's just the way it was done.
Well, we just don't have the fleet, we don't have the front-end loaders, we have the sidearm, and we can pick up the 96 gallon carts all day, but we don't have the fleet to do the dumpsters.
And, and those are, you don't want to invest in those, you don't have to.
And that's based upon 140,000 tons, right?
Fifty, well, no, roughly 50,000 tons is what the cities produce, no, now the pro forma...
I'm looking at the, pre-read on the council, page 69, it's in our packet, so all this is based upon 140,000 MSW tons annually at the Waste Away facility.
Yes, it is. That's, that's, part of that has got to deal with the solid waste authority and ability to, to direct flow to you, to this facility. I've got it at $60 per ton as a disposal and processing fee.
Okay.
I think we can do better than that, I've kind of hedged a little bit on that disposal fee, if we get a full 140,000 tons at Waste Away, I'm kind of, kind of underpromising, or under...
Overcommit.
Always get that backwards.
We're being conservative.
Overpromise.
Be careful how you say that.
Yeah. It's, it's a very conservative estimate, but 140 is what that plan is being designed to handle, optimally handle. 50 of it will be ours, we got about 50 from...
50 from the county if they come in, and if, and if they don't, that's where the, that's where the solid waste authority makes a little bit more sense, they do have, I don't want to speak from a legal perspective, but I'm playing, I'll, I'll play a little bit of that, I think they've got more authority or more statutory authority to, to direct garbage in their area to a facility of their selection versus the, and we, again, there's a balance there, because we want to make sure that the processing fees that we would charge would be at or below market, and, and make it, and make it attractive for them to take it there versus forcing them to take garbage there. So there's, 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 there is some, there's some nuance here that I'm trying to be conservative in the fee structure I'm providing you. Big, big, big point, though, is that we really need to be at 16, just to cover what we got today, 16 plus, and the plus is the question mark, to cover, to cover what we need today, we need to be at 16 per month, I'm saying seven and a half roughly in the future, beyond that.
If the county didn't come in on us, let's just say, for whatever reason, they go in an entirely different direction, and it's just us and the Waste Away facility, how does that affect the calculation? Are we talking about more per can or less per can?
Well, this is where the authority can have that ability to tell the businesses inside the city limits that they are to take their, their municipal solid waste to the Waste Away facility. And again, we need to set the price so that it's attractive for them, $60 is a very attractive price, I think the market is more around $75 per, you know, so if, if you set the price for commercial businesses inside the city at, say, 70, give, give them a $5 below-market incentive, then we're right on the numbers, and we're actually, we'll, we'll actually be in a better condition than what I'm showing.
Okay. So, just a, one easy way to think about it is, there's collection fees, and that's what we're talking about, the monthly, and the disposal fees, okay? So when Darren's talking about 16, $70, he's talking about the disposal fee, which, on a per-can basis, per-month, collection fee gets translated and calculated in, so it, you know, there's a lot of fee discussions, but just so people don't get confused about what the numbers are, you know, don't, we're not talking about a $60 monthly fee anymore. When Darren was talking about 60, he's talking about a $60 per ton, disposal fee that has to go back into the equation, and it might be a, how much?
Well, it's about, for every $10 increase on the, on the disposal fee, it's about a dollar per month.
Yeah, so it's a translation.
For, for the commercials, we've got 50,000 cans, and we're talking about 50,000 tons, so it's about a one-to-one relationship.
And the big, the big effect on the disposal fee will be the income that the disposal plant could make.
Yeah.
So if it's making a lot of income, they can adjust that disposal fee down, and like Darren said, if that disposal fee goes down far enough, people who are dumping will come and dump there, as opposed to paying $75, they'll come and pay 65, 50, $55 to dump per ton at that fee, and that's how you can make sure that your, your, your flow into the plant hits that number that maximizes their, the plant's use.
I'm, I'm viewing, and we're going to take up about a third of that capacity at the Waste Away, and we will be able to set a rate to bring in the other two-thirds to our advantage, so that people voluntarily want to bring it.
It will make business sense.
It will make business sense to them, correct.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from Darren? Darren, this is great information.
Thank you.
Item six has been pulled, we're going to go to item seven, development impact fee.
So we passed, the council passed an ordinance setting the structure for the impact fees that will go into effect when the ordinance that sets the fees goes into effect, so, so what's, the next step is to really set the fees, the council communication didn't have the correct fees in there, and so I apologize, it distributed the correct fees, and those are the maximum fees that our study showed that could be assessed, it's not the fees that have to be assessed, so that's the question to council, is what, where do we want to set fees so that Adam and his folks can draft the ordinance that will establish the fees, and the fees can go into effect? That's the discussion, I think the most that I've heard in the discussion points really revolve around the residential fee, hasn't been a lot of discussion about multifamily, although that should probably remain at a per-dwelling price for, for practical reasons, and then the retail office, public institutional, and industrial fees seem to be not a point of contention, it's really the, the residential, and, and the structure, this, what you have in front of you is a flat fee number that was calculated using the, the data that was gathered by our consultant, go to a square foot fee, there's, there's different ways that, that that could be handled, so that's what we're asking councils, to give us some direction on how Adam can at least draft a proposed fee structure to put forward to council, and then that can be discussed further at a council meeting.
Craig, I've got one question, I'm just, I've got the old stuff back, you know, whenever we first kicked it around, the max fee was 7318, and now we're looking at 10,952 on residential.
Yeah, we were doing some comparisons with Smyrna and using different fees to go back and forth, and so, it, it does get a little confusing, you know, and, and some, some fees we had before, council directed to go back and do one for schools, and so now we have a school fee on there. So, yeah, I'd be cautious about the old fees, and then the ones, like I said, on the, was just, the ones on the council communication was just my mistake, so the, the one that was handed out would be the, the actual fees that showed in our, in our last studies that were, were done.
Yeah, there was one with roads, parks, and public safety, and one with roads, parks, public safety and school, but be that as it may, I guess the question I've got that caught my eye is on residential, in terms of the breakdown, parks is getting the biggest cut of that, 3,881, followed by schools, and then roads, and then public safety. And I guess the question I would have for the other members of the council, is that the right distribution, or does it need to be tweaked where more goes to other entities?
We're, we're maximized, that, those are the, that's the most we can charge each bucket, so we can lower each bucket, but we can't raise any of the buckets.
Okay. Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't put, from an impact fee standpoint, we couldn't put 5,000 for roads and take, you know, the, the difference away from parks and put it over there, we'd, we'd have to keep it at roads.
I, I do think we need to switch it to a per-square-foot instead of a per-dwelling, that way, if you're a guy building a garage apartment in his backyard, you're not paying 10,900, you'd be paying per-square-foot basis, so I think that's a lot more doable. I'm, I'm for maxes on all the rest of this stuff, except for residential, but on residential, I think we need to go to, to per-square-foot.
I agree with Sean, I think that penalizes, on residential, a flat fee, it penalizes the guy building a 2,500 square-foot house, paying the same as a person building a 5,000 square-foot house is kind of ridiculous, so I would support a per-square-foot allocation as well.
Any thoughts on what that number would be? I think that's probably what...
Look, I've got an Excel spreadsheet with all kinds of different numbers.
I'll say this, is that if you look at 10,952, and you say, okay, a 5,000 square-foot house, at a minimum, based on what Craig's got out there, it's $2.19 a square foot, a 4,000 square-foot house, it's 2.74, and for a 2,500 square-foot house, it's 4.38. So I don't think it needs to be a dollar a square foot, like the county, I think it needs at a minimum, need to be at $2, and somewhere north of that.
I talked to Jason Cole over the weekend at Laverne's mayor, and they just instituted a $5,000 flat fee, and theirs only covers public safety and roads, so we have a school system and a park system, so you got to take that into account with ours as well.
I'm at $2 a square foot, for what it's worth.
As, as a minimum, as a starting coin, or...
No, I'm just at $2 a square foot.
Opening bid?
My opening bid, yeah.
I'm for no more than a dollar.
Say that again, Madeline, I'm sorry.
No more than a dollar.
I think a dollar, and we're back here having the same discussion again next year, because it's not going to, it, it's just going to make more people upset than it actually solves anything. We got to understand a few things, this is not going to be a full recovery from any of these four, four buckets, so we're not, we're not solving these problems with the impact fee. Two, these fees are going to be rolled down to the consumer, so they're not necessarily, the developers are paying for them, but they're not, they're, they are going to get rolled down, and they do get to stay in the areas in which these repairs are doing, so on multifamily, for instance, if a developer comes through, builds a giant complex, they can divert some of their impact fees to doing road improvements that need done in those areas, which they can do cheaper than we can do and get them done faster. So that, that's just a couple of things to think about with these impact fees, is you don't want to implement them at a number that you know for a fact, you're going to be back here in a year, two years raising them up, because they didn't actually solve any problems, they just made people mad that you implemented them. any problems, they just made people mad that you implemented them. And I think that's where you are at a dollar. A dollar, on the average house that we've had in the last rolling five years, is about twenty-five-hundred square foot.
That's higher than the numbers I found. Mine were like twenty-two.
Twenty-two is the average-sized townhome in the past five years.
So you're saying, single-family was twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, at twenty-five-hundred dollars, or for a one-dollar a square foot, you're half the price of Laverne with two more buckets to pay for.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And, and the two other buckets are the most expensive by percentage of the four buckets. So, just some, something to think about. I, I don't think a dollar a foot, I, I don't even think that's a good start to the discussion, personally.
I was, well, if I'm reading this correctly, the way we're proposing it, the average citizen, the average citizen is not going to be able to afford the bill. I'm just looking at the average, I'm not looking at above average or higher.
Let's just say you implemented full-blow, which I'm not for a full-blow, but at ten-thousand-nine-fifty-two, a full-blow to the average citizen is about sixty bucks a month in a mortgage payment.
For a thirty-year mortgage.
Thirty-year fixed-rate mortgage. So, even at a full-blow, you're talking about sixty bucks a month, which is a lot of money.
It is, it can knock people out of eligibility.
It can knock, but, but that's, that's a full blow. The past two years, I've seen people throw more money than that on top of an offer just to be able to buy a house that they wanted. People, it's a different mindset.
At twenty-five hundred square foot house, two dollars, that's five thousand, five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and at three dollars, it's seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, two dollars, or twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents per month, or three hundred, about three hundred twenty-two dollars a year is the difference.
I don't know, it just seems like just about everything we're doing, when we're looking at finances, is hurting the average person. I mean, every, this is just my, you know, and I may be reading this wrong, but we're just constantly smothering out the average person, and I don't know how many average people we have in this city. We may have a lot more above average, but it seems like the average person will make decisions, we're just gradually smothering them out of the economy.
Now, this only affects brand-new construction houses, so-
Right.
If you go buy a, a existing house on the market, this has nothing to do with it.
Right.
And on, on average, NAR averages, pre, or a new home sells for about eight, eight to ten percent, depending on location, more than a pre-existing home, so-
I was looking at new homes, which they can't afford either, but, you know.
Sean, what's a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house, anybody running these days on average? Shane, Sean, anybody?
This year, like, right now?
Yeah, right now. If I ever go out and say I want a twenty-five-
Low, low point, four and a quarter, high point, seven hundred, depending on location, amenities, things like that.
We're talking about the average?
Twenty-five-hundred square foot?
Yeah.
So at eight, a hundred-and-eighty a square foot, you're looking at four-fifty. One-eighty a square foot's a hot, a nice house.
Oh.
But in theory-
Nice, a four-hundred thousand-dollar house is a nicer house.
Something to think about.
I'll just-
I'll just throw this out, I said two dollars is a minimum, in my opinion. I'm like you, Sean, I think a dollar is a waste of time, honestly. We'll be back here trying to discuss this again at some point in time. But if what Jamie just said, twenty-five-hundred at a hundred-and-eighty is, what, four-fifty?
Four-fifty.
And somebody buys a house, okay, and they end up paying, let's just say the max fee, ten-nine-fifty-two, a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, if they're in it for five years, and it's appreciating three percent a year, and they sell it, they've made up that fee, is the way I look at it as a homeowner. So, I'm, I'm not trying to penalize anybody for purchasing, but I'm like, Sean, I think growth should pay for growth.
Give me just a second, I'll tell you what, the average twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house is, right now.
And no disrespect to what you just said, but you said, you know, in another year, we'll probably be back to the drawing board on this again, but how many other situations have we had on the council when we haven't come back? And, so, my thing is, if we have to come back, just let's come back, but I'm just looking at the here and now, of people being able to afford homes, and if the average is for something, I would say, over half our city, if they want to build, they won't be able to build. I mean, that's just me.
Yeah.
And maybe I'm talking from my income, because I have a fixed income, but I, I don't think we're giving enough love to the average person. That's just me.
When I started thinking about this, Madeline, I was at a dollar per square foot, and, and I see where the other council members are coming from, that a dollar is so insignificant, but for all the reasons you just said, I don't think I'm willing to go above two dollars. I think two dollars is like my maximum, but for those reasons, too. I, I don't think it's fair to make financial decisions as a city council based on what we assume the percent growth of equity in a house is going to be over the next three to five years. And sixty dollars a month is a big deal to a lot of homeowners when applying for a mortgage, especially after looking at property taxes going up, which increases the escrow, which increases the monthly payment, so-
You're saying no to one and yes to two.
I'm saying, that was my original thought, I think in a perfect world, I would love one, but I see where they're coming from, and that, I think next year, we're back again. I think two years gives us a couple of years to see how it plays out, and then if we have to raise it, maybe we have to, to raise it again.
So, I, I just ran numbers, and this is, houses closed the past three months, so that's pretty relative, pretty recent. All new constructions, all in Murfreesboro, all based between twenty-four and twenty-six-hundred square foot, so hit that, just that average number. The average closed price was a hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents a square foot at four-seventy-two, seven-fifty, four-sevent, four-hundred-seventy-two, hundred, four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar average closed price.
Was that new construction?
That's new construction.
You said, price per square foot was what?
Price per square foot is one-ninety-four, forty-six.
Average sales price?
Average sales price, four-seventy-two, seven-fifty-six.
Does it give mean and median on there, or just the average?
Well, average and mean are the same.
I mean, median.
But median's one-ninety-five, thirty-seven, and the median sales, four-seventy-eight, eight-seventy.
Okay.
So, by doing that, so, I'm just looking at five years down the road, maybe, even three years, and with all the construction and things we have coming up, like the downtown and all that, so, we are going to be a city of the haves and the have-nots, to me.
The-
I'm just saying that because who can afford, you know, like, let's say a teacher's salary, let's say a firefighter or a police salary, who can afford that? You know, and we're just going to be, we, we have, we're a growing city, I don't know, up in the top three, three most livable cities in the United States, so, and that's great, but then when you come in and try to live here and buy here, we're going to be a city of have and have-nots.
The days of two-hundred-thousand-dollar single-family houses in this area, they're over. You can't even buy the land to build one to make them that affordable anymore.
And I, and I agree with that, but I think what Madeline is saying is, do we have to make it worse?
Well, again, I'm talking full-blown numbers, so, again, preference that. At, at ten-nine-fifty-two, on this average price number, that is less than two percent of the purchase price.
It's one-point-zero-six percent.
Yeah.
I just said the numbers. So, could I get, along the lines, you have to remember that what we're doing, to a certain extent, is shifting costs from existing taxpayers solely to existing taxpayers onto the people who are coming in, buying new. So, to the extent that it remains on existing taxpayers, roads and everything else, it gets paid up in property tax, because that's where we're going to tax it, and that will hit mortgage payments somewhere in your escrow, because that's, you know, they're going to escrow that amount to pay property taxes. So, it's, it's not, these aren't new costs that we're talking about, these are just shifting costs to where the determination is that they should be paid.
But not, but not a full recovery, there is-
It's not a full recovery.
It's still going to be in your property taxes, but some of that cost will be diverted to it, just the new development.
Yeah, so, we're, we're really just shuffling the numbers around, but individuals, I, I hear what you're saying, but individuals, they will, that will impact them whether these fees go on or not, because we have the costs that we need to incur.
I'm personally at three dollars a foot, that's cheaper than Franklin, but more expensive than Smyrna-Laverne. That's not full recovery, full recovery's four dollars and thirty-eight cents and, four-thirty-eight and some extra numbers behind the, the decimal point. So, I'm not at the full number, but I'm, I'm about three dollars a foot, which is about seventy-five hundred bucks on a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house.
I'm with Sean, I'm not at the full number. I mean, that's a nice max. I think two's a starting point. If you go three, it's more than Laverne, like what Sean says, but you've also got all four buckets, where-
All four buckets.
Laverne only has two buckets.
Yeah.
And somebody who moves here from California, okay, not that I have anything against people from California, but, or Arizona, okay? To be fair.
For California, unfortunately.
Had a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house.
You're fully valid.
And let's just say it appreciates a three percent a year over five years, that's sixty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars in equity it's appreciated. So that person sells that house, they make their sixty-seven thousand, they're only out sixty bucks a month, over sixty months, thirty-six hundred. So, yeah, I get it, it is more on their payment, but that house is still appreciated, and is still growing, and it's, it's not a full recovery, it's designed to help offset and help every taxpayer. It's, it's unfair to put all this on every taxpayer-
Yeah, I agree.
-without a fair fee.
I agree. Three dollars a square foot is less than five hundred dollars a year, and about a point, about a point and a half on your total PI.
And that, that's covering all four buckets, reduced from four dollars and thirty-eight cents and some per, by foot to three dollars a foot.
I'm not going to make a comment about the fee, but on Twitter, there's this account that Murfreesboro, well, I forget what the name of the-
You're not Murfreesboro?
No, Murfreesboro Hollers, that, you know, I made a comment on WGNS about affordable housing the other day. You know, it, it pains me to see how people just parse like two sentences of what you say, and so, Madeline, my, my comment on affordable housing was that people now are having to drive for affordability, because, you know, land's less expensive in Coffee County, Cannon County, Bedford County, you know, it's just less expensive than it is in Murfreesboro. You know, I think the days of affordable, single-family homes, you can't develop a lot for less than a hundred thousand dollars, for just a lot. So, you take a hundred thousand dollars for a piece of land and a lot, that's going to put you at four-seventy-five to five-fifty for a single-family house. So, the people, the, the tough thing, Madeline, is that we either are going to have to say it's okay for multifamily, and have very dense developments, townhomes and apartments, or we say we want single-family, which we've said over the years, and there's no mix in between. I mean, there's, there's no way, and when I say there's no mix in between, you can't have it both ways. You can't say we want single-family, and the price point's going to be four-fifty to five-fifty, or we don't want townhomes, and that's really our only affordable product. So that's the catch-22 we're in, in right now. And then, or, you drive to Christiana, or Bedford, or Bedford County, or Cannon County, where you can find-
Yeah, there's, there's lots of houses under two-fifty in Bedford County, or Marshall County, or Cannon County, so you just drive thirty more minutes, and you can buy your affordable-
But then the bad thing with that, Madeline, is that that affordability factor goes to Bedford County, and then everybody drives into Murfreesboro, which causes our traffic issues, because people are having to come into Murfreesboro for their jobs, so it's a-
Yeah, and that's-
It's, it's, your, your debt on is just a tough issue.
And that's, and that's exactly the point I'm making, too, is that it's a shame that Murfreesboro, as, as much as we have to offer, as far as schools, hospitals, all these amenities, but yet and still, a person can't afford to have a house here. They have to drive to Smyrna, or wherever, to live and come in here, and I just hate to, you know, part-
That's why our houses are so expensive, because of our amenities and people wanting to move here, it-
Right.
It creates demand, and then the demand creates a lower supply, which increases the house price.
Right, I understand that, but as a council, you know, we're dealing with everybody's tax dollars, and, but yet you still, when decisions like this are made, we're cutting out a big portion of our city residents that can't afford to live here, and it just bothers me that, and a comment was made to me that, hey, this is the, like you all saying, this is what it is, and if they can't afford it, they just got to leave or move out. That's terrible to me, and that's, I, I, I'm just, I guess I came from the little-man mentality when I was growing up. My neighborhood, you know, it was all African-American before integration, and, you know, not only now is it African-American, it's everyone. You'd be surprised how many people just going to have to move, not that they want to, and then by the time they spend all this money in gas and whatever, coming back here, back and forth to work, but, you know, I know this is an argument I'll never win, but it just touches my heart.
We appreciate your thoughts and concerns, Madeline.
Okay. I'm good, I'm good.
Let me say something, because I, you know, I appreciate the, the dialogue that we're having, because affordability in our community is something we're going to deal with for the years to come. I mean, and, but there's several tools that we have, and, and we've got to explore some of those tools, working with developers to, to, maybe, when they want more density, they're going to have to, you know, deal with that, maybe with a different price point or something to, and, and if we look at the thing that's next on our, well, the Broad Street development, we've, we've used some different tools there to address this affordability issue. But I think, Madeline, the point that I would make is to, if we don't target this, or use this tool to create another revenue stream to address infrastructure needs in a growth community, if we don't use this effectively, this is a different tool, it took us a long time to even get to this place. If you realize, we've been struggling to this, to get to this place in our community for a long time. I wish we'd have kind of looked at this a few years ago, but it doesn't change the costs. The costs on, on one side of the equation, one side of the balance sheet are going to be there. We're going to have to buy, pay for roads, we're going to have to have schools, we're going to have to have parks. That expense side of the balance sheet is going to be there, and our tools to address those, to have that revenue stream, presently, one of our only tools is property tax. So, the people that we're concerned about, the people that we want to have less impact on their daily budget, are going to be impacted through property taxes anyway. Existing property owners are going to have to pay that bill anyway. So, in this way, what we're, what I think Craig was talking about is, we're putting a little more of that burden on those people coming into our community, the new people, and our, the new construction that's in our community, and that is an additional revenue stream, additional tool, that I think is a prudent way for the council to look at it, to look at this, and, you know, I, I think coming up with that figure, whether it's two or three, you know, I guess we'll, we'll decide where that number is, but I think, I think feeling bad that we're, want to keep this number down as low as possible, because somehow, you know, that's going to benefit somebody. We're still going to pay property taxes, we're still going to have to buy schools, and pay for roads, and parks. The, the bill is still coming, it's just who are we going to, who's going to pay it? And, and what, the tool that impact, these development impact fees allow us to do, is to shift that from existing property owners to new people coming to our community a little bit more. So, I, I think this is a-
I understand that.
I'm glad we got here. I'm glad we got to this point.
Craig, you want a motion?
What's that?
Rent is going up for people in these apartments, you know, I just, I struggle with, you know, the Bible says, you know, there's always going to be poor homeowners, I know that, but, you know, it also says the blessed should help the rest, and we're a blessed city, but let's move on. Let's go.
You want a motion, Craig?
Direction, a motion and a vote, be direction, or you can just get a-
Move to three dollars a square foot on residential, and full blows on everything else by dwelling.
I'll second that motion.
Can I ask one thing, though? I think we, I think, we have a motion, a second. I think it would be better to do this televised, as opposed to do this not televised.
Yes.
But I think we also said, we need to have, once we say this is what the council is thinking about doing, I think it's fair to have a public hearing to let the stakeholders come and speak about this, because, you know, it's easy for us to say this is what we think we may do or not do, but we need to get- we may do or not do, but we need to get, you know, opinions on that as well.
So this isn't, just to be clear, this isn't a motion to set the fee.
Okay.
We still need to do that. This is a motion to give us direction on how to, at least just draft the ordinance, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so we'll do that.
This, this motion is not for voting on the fee. This is, this motion is for setting the fee for Adam to be able to come back with an ordinance that.
Telling us what to just put on paper right now to start further discussion.
This is going to be the fee, though, the rest?
No, this is going to be, this is the recommendation for the fee to come back to the council with, with, with the, the ordinance.
Be the ordinance we've been voting on.
Right.
Yeah, then, and discuss, and it can be changed.
Can we include within that motion the, uh, public hearing?
Yes.
I mean, I, I'd like to include that in the motion, if you would.
Yes, amended motion to include a public hearing.
You want to do a stakeholder meeting, too?
Meeting would be the public hearing.
You want to do the public hearing and stakeholder, okay.
I'll second the.
I was thinking stakeholders, developers, come.
I'll second the amended motion with the public hearing of stakeholders, whoever those stakeholders are.
So we have a motion on the floor to recommend $3 per square foot with a public hearing at the time that that's presented to the city council.
Okay, can do it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. We have a, a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Abrewater?
No.
Ms. Gels Harris?
No.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shacklett?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Abstain.
Motion failed.
No.
No.
Yeah.
Four.
Three to two.
Three to two. One, two, three, one, two.
Abstain counts as, I mean, in, in.
Three to abstain.
Abstain is count, is.
No.
Is ultimately, I mean, I can't, I, I'm not, I can't vote on.
No, you can't.
So.
So fail.
But abstain is a.
Yes.
Okay, could we just direct staff to come back with a recommendation as opposed to doing this?
I don't really like to have a public hearing slash stakeholder meeting.
Artic setting the number?
Yes. Yes.
That, I would go with that.
We can, I can draft it in a way that, that it's set up, since we, we know that.
Square foot.
That we know what it's going to be written as a square foot.
Right.
That dollar amount can be left blank.
Perfect.
I'm assuming, based on the discussion here, that for non-residential property, we're looking at the maximum fee that's set out in the schedules. Yep, that's right. Okay, that, I, that's enough, that's enough for me to work with.
X dollars per square foot not to exceed 10,952, that's what you're saying.
Right, yes. That's enough for me to work with.
Thank you, Adam.
Sure.
Leave it at zero, because it will be zero.
All right. Any other discussion on the development fee? All right, we'll move to CIP reallocation. Ms. Brown?
This is just the additional land acquisition for Town Creek that was moved out of general fund and into CIP, and Rucker Lane project was moved into that general fund reserve for $2,000, or $2,800 since last month's meeting.
Need a motion?
I don't need anything. It's information for council.
Thanks, Brown.
Thank you.
Speaking of, for information purposes, you have the March 2023 dashboard in front of you. We have no beer permits, any statements?
I had a question on the hotel motel. There's probably more of them. It's based upon how many, how many motels, hotel motels that we actually incur in the city. I've never actually counted what that is.
I could probably pull that.
Then is it 12?
We can go back and get the data. The other, the other important is really more hotel rooms, because hotels very low, but we can get.
It's rooms.
Yeah, we can get you a number of hotels, hotel rooms, and then.
And it's room night, room nights.
And then.
Up to, up to 30 days, and once someone stays over 30 days, even if it's not advertised as an extended stay hotel, that tax gets, should go back to the, the person who's renting.
The reason I bring it up is, a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce, and they just expressed our need for additional hotels. I'm curious what that would be at some point in time, if we had two more 150-unit hotels, and others, one on this Broad Street that's 80 to 150, but what would it be if we had four more motels in the next five years?
We have 48 now that we collect on, but that also includes Airbnbs, I believe.
Airbnbs.
Is that, is that on your list here?
It also.
At least the ones that.
We've moved to quite a few Airbnbs, because that close to the state now.
Okay, so no, it doesn't. It, it should just be 48 hotels and motels on our list.
Craig?
Just curious.
So, Austin, good information. Nate has a breakdown, because we had.
Yeah.
A discussion. You would be surprised at how few hotel rooms that we have in all of Rutherford County. I want to say it's like 5,000 hotel rooms, but then when you break out, like, the Regal Ends, the Safari Ends, the Jackson Motels of where people who are coming in for an event would stay, that number goes down to like 500 or 600 room nights, when you figure like hotels that are considered flag hotels. So I mean, it, it's a, he's, Nate's got all that somewhere that maybe he can email out to us, but it was like alarming on how few hotel rooms that we actually have compared to people who are coming in. And then the, the discussion we had this morning on the tennis facility of how many people, like this, this last weekend.
True.
Came in from Nashville and stayed in Murfreesboro to go see Taylor Swift, because they weren't paying $800 a night in Nashville, and it was cheaper to drive back and forth to Murfreesboro than it was to be able to stay in Nashville. So that was the other discussion, how many people now can't afford a Nashville hotel room, and they're coming to Murfreesboro instead. So it's, it's an interesting number.
Bonnaroo will fill it up.
It was 450 a night.
So was the Hilton, yeah.
Half the price of Nashville, though.
Hilton was full at 450.
I was kind of curious, what would that be at some point, if we were to go down that road? I'm sorry.
Give you an example, in the fall, we had the, I forget what, the soccer tournament that was here in the fall.
Yeah.
And it was the same weekend that NASCAR was out at, at the super speedway. So we were getting complaints from these soccer tournaments, or soccer people who were coming, for example, out of Georgia, that their block hotel room was in Nashville. And it was because that our hotel, hoteliers had already booked up their rooms for the NASCAR race. So it's a, if you can get a bank to loan you money to build a hotel right now, it would be a good, a good, a good business, but that's easier said than done.
Yeah. Are we on other business?
Yes.
You wanted to go over the budget calendar.
Right, so we're planning to have the 4 o'clock special meeting on May 25th, where I'll do the city's budget, Darren will do water and stormwater, and Dr. Duke will do schools, and then that'll roll into the regular 6 o'clock meeting, where we'll plan to have public hearings and first reading of the city's budget. I don't know that we'll meet the next week.
It's a short.
Memorial Day week, so right now the plan is to come back, assuming second, assuming the budget is approved on first reading on May 25th, and have second reading on June 8th. I know that we'll have a couple of council members out, so I just wanted to see if we would have the other members in before we set that, or we can look at another date for second reading.
I'm good with the eighth.
I'll be here June 8th.
I'll be here.
I won't be here June 8th.
I won't be here June 1st.
I won't be here June 1st.
Now, the 25th, we said also?
I'm sorry?
25th, what did we say about the 20th?
Yeah, 25th at 4, and then at 6 for the regular meeting.
You said we have public comments, too?
The June 8th meeting, I don't know if we'll have that or not.
The hit readings? Oh, you mean in general?
Public comment.
I think there's a second reading.
25th is public hearing.
Public hearing, I've got.
And that's the 4, 4 o'clock and 6 o'clock?
Right.
So May 25th, June 8th.
Do we have a quorum on the 8th?
I believe so, because.
I don't think, Bill, did, are you?
He'd be here, yes.
So it's me and the mayor will not be here.
I will check with Mr. Wade as well.
All right, any other business from staff?
I got one thing.
Yes, sir.
I'll just throw this out here, I believe the state law had changed that requires, I guess, 48 hours on an agenda, which obviously makes it, I guess, challenging for this meeting for a Wednesday noon meeting. And I guess I was just going to throw out, is there any appetite, as a council, we move our workshops from a Wednesday to a Thursday? That way, it's always a Thursday council meeting or a Thursday workshop at noon. Just throwing that out as food for thought.
Better beans.
Easier on the staff, it's.
It would make our lives a lot easier.
Would it really? Oh, wow.
Monday gets, would, last Monday was, Monday morning was really tough, to have something posted by 11:30 on that Monday.
What caused the state law?
For a Wednesday, for a Wednesday meeting. So Thursday's at 7, so we have until that Tuesday at 7 to post something. If we move this, we have at least Tuesday noon, or Tuesday 11:30, if we move to Thursday workshops from a Wednesday workshop.
Six, one, like a dozen others.
Thank you. Is the, is it available, though? Do we have to clear with airport to use it?
Behind you.
Well, do own it.
Over there, Mayor.
No, I mean, I'm, you know, we, we don't, we don't get to make many decisions, but we do set Chad's budget, so.
Rotary Club meet here, you know? Going to kick out the Rotary Club?
You know a guy that is.
City Hall available. Problem for us to meet at Thursdays?
Not at all.
Uh, present an ordinance that changes that, but that's, that's an easy lift to y'all.